I don't doubt it, he's drunk.
Anybody to join in the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we will call for a regular city council meeting, November seventh morning. First thing on our agenda is public comment, personal communications correspondence. This period is for comments by the public and for the mayor, council, and city staff to present correspondence, communications, or comments. No action may be taken upon matter presented under this section until it is placed on an agenda for action. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. With that, we will ask for a public comment.
Hi, my name is Steph Ward Gay. I just wanted to come up here and say, I know you guys are going to sign this lease agreement today, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we have asked you many times to... You were all hired on here by the people of this county and the city. And this has been going on for a year, over a year now. And I have never once seen anyone here do anything for the people. You haven't gone out on a limb and did anything. There, in these contracts and everything that you're doing, there's no, nothing in there for the people of this county to protect us in any way. You haven't put any effort into putting anything in these lease agreements or in anything that you've done for this whole time, not wanting you to have done anything to help us. You sat back here and just went with the flow of what you want to do. The other thing I wanted to bring forth is, you know, if it affects the air, wind, land, water, you should be thinking real hard about what you're doing. You already know the mine's going to take a ton of water. Now you've got the man camp that's going to take a ton of water. Then you've got the transloading station that's going to take a ton of water. And now you're bringing in cardboard companies that's going to take a ton of water. What are you guys going to do when you have no water? Are you guys all going to do this immediately? I mean, what are we going to do when there's no water? Because you have taken it all for all these projects that you've got going on here. You've got twenty thousand people going to be living at the man camp. How much water is that? Or however many people you have living at the man camp. It's two thousand, sorry, two thousand people. I know, I see the smirk on your face, but two thousand people in that man camp, it's going to take a lot of water. And nobody cares. I, I, I don't know. I just think you guys needed to put some effort into helping your, your people that put you in this office. I don't see you doing anything to help us at all, nothing. You've done everything for the county and for the, I don't know, prestige. So when we get hurt by this, it's all going to come back on each individual person that's sitting at this board, because there's nothing you have done for us. You have done it all for Lithium. You have done nothing for us. Thanks.
Any other public comments?
Hello?
Hi, hello.
How's everybody today?
Good.
That's good. My name is Jamie Nikotera, I'm a Humboldt County resident, I live on Rose Creek, and I'm close to the airport. I'll do my best to stay within your requested time, because it's pretty, pretty personal matter for me. This truly is out my backyard, it's in my backyard. So, it, it comes with a really heavy heart, but I know I'm here today, and I am pretty sure based on the way you've voted before, you know, what your intent is, and you think it's worth the risk to the county residents for the city investment on the city property, is what I've heard you say. So I wrote a statement, in attempt to keep it within your timeframe. Uh, let's see. As city officials, your obligations are protect your community and uphold the law of our land, and I know that you all know this, but I'd just like to reiterate where I'm coming from and the fact that I've researched you, and I don't want you to think that I'm not well versed on what we should be doing here. Because prior to all of this, guess I should thank you, because I didn't know, but I do now. Your objectives and your oath of office are to not conceal plans and move forward threatening my land, or to take away or infringe right, infringe on my rights as a property owner and an American citizen. And I know that that sounds probably way right, way near left, you probably won't go about it, but I do have rights. I pay taxes, I'm a county resident, I bought land almost seven years ago, and so if this were ten years in the past, you have plenty of time to make sure that we, that land wasn't available and that we didn't purchase it. That's probably the most upsetting part of this situation, so we honestly did not have to be here. And President Mrs. Mabberty knows best, she was on the zoning and planning commission back in 2012 and discussed all of that. The impact that something like this would have on at least fifteen hundred residents. And that, quite frankly, I think is absurd and extremely frustrating. Having said that, this is not about liking or disliking growth. I support it and I respect it, and the need for growth, even Mayor Stone repeats my words, a community without growth is stagnant. So you've got to have it, and I support the growth. But most importantly, we need to support the community and the residents that we currently have. We already have brownouts, we are already having sewer issues, I'll close my amount of time.
Thank you, you're at three minutes, but if you speak it up.
Well, like I said, it's a, it's an important issue, but we already at times cannot sustain the current residents in our area. So that's a great concern to me and should be to you as well, the use of water. The fact that our, our community thrives with our airport. I don't know if you like the Nats this year, but imagine not being able to spray for them without an airport and they can't take off. That's, that's an issue. So abandonment of your duties as public officials and stealing my rights, that's taking my rights without due compensation. It's unethical and against the law. It's like welcoming a drug dealer into your neighborhood, knowing that you're going to have traffic twenty-four-seven, it's going to be noisy, it's going to be stinky, it's going to be a wide variety of things. That becomes an issue. So we, we trust you to make the right decisions. I did forward a list long ago to Alicia and to many of you about our requests for having some community involvement, about safety concerns, and what things we could implement that would keep us safe. And in this lease agreement, there were none of those things. Nothing was done about that. So again, another, a huge blow to the area residents that have to live with the decisions that you're making today. I'm trying to shorten it up, so I'm having to skim through it here. Let's see. So our right to quiet enjoyment on our properties and the pursuit of happiness and liberty, we all have this right, and I want to reiterate that I did pull up specific state statutes that talk about the rights that you will also be giving away, that concern me for you as your property and your investments. That should concern you, and it should alarm you that once you sign this agreement, that your course of action is also very limited. And that, that concerns me. I just want you to know that your decisions today, aside from the forty-year agreement with this lease and the option to renew, that there are very, very long-term consequences, especially in a situation there's an incident out of this facility. And we're talking about our health, our water, our soil, all of those things. So I see that I've clearly overgone my time, and I really appreciate your patience and your attention to this matter and your diligence as a representative, even though you're not my representatives, the decisions that you make affect me and my family. And I want you to know that I would really appreciate you not signing this lease today until you have more information, until more can be done to investigate what rights you're actually giving up in this agreement. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes, I would, I've got a question, hopefully it's a short one. My name is Mary Davis, and what I would like to know is that you guys are aware that the PA studies have to be done, state and federal. And I want to know, it is a requirement that you make it public, available to the public. How are you going to make these results public? Are they going to be printed in the paper? They, how, how are you going to make these results public? I've already talked to the state and the federal, you have to make them public. How are you going to do it?
How are we going to tell this?
Okay. Um, I do have concerns about planning and zoning, I know Councilwoman Mabberty, you were on the planning commission before, involved when they were doing the master planning, a lot of that. So, something that would have come up has been what is zoning for out of the airport, and the zoning surrounding the airport, the zoning district for the Grass Valley, Rose Creek area. And there's no zoning for a heavy industrial building. There's also the question of, none of this has gone before the county commissioners or the planning commission for, for anything. And by signing a lease, you are giving property rights to a corporation. But I'm afraid that the city is going into this forgetting about the property rights that the residents all have for the property they own around it. And what kind of liability are you getting yourselves into as the city? Because I have property rights and you have property rights. My property rights don't take away yours, your property rights are not supposed to take away mine. But with this facility, that's exactly what you will be doing to hundreds of residents, and it is not legal. You would have to go in and probably do eminent domain proceedings to hundreds of residents out there, and then you would have to give just compensation, and that would be including me. And I just don't know if any of you have thought about the seriousness of this. It's something that's gone before the Supreme Court before. This is a, this is a law protecting everybody in every single state in the United States, my given rights as a US citizen property owner. That's some serious stuff right there. You have not gone to the planning commission, you have not gone to Humboldt County. You are attempting to give property rights to a foreign corporation and hinder and take away illegally property rights of Humboldt County residents.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello? My name is Joanna Pavala, I'm a Humboldt County resident on Rose Creek, and just again coming for council members with this potential lease, there are no protections or provisions. And I mentioned to the county, I've signed lease agreements or presented lease agreements more stringent for renting a home than putting in a huge facility in literally my backyard. I, I mean, I am walking distance to the railroad tracks, this is in my backyard, and there's no provisions for protections. So not only am I coming to you, but also to Lithium. Why are there no protections? You're just basically, we feel like, well, you know, move, well, we can't necessarily just move, so we'll live here and deal with it, and that's not, that's not right. And it's not your job. You took an oath to protect and to serve not to be bought or in your, what's in your interest. Please consider what is in the interest of the residents in Humboldt County.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Laura DeGeorge, and I live on Pine Road, which at the very end of Pine Road is where this facility is proposed to go, right in my front yard. Lights and all of that would be right into my business window. You have been presented with multiple other options for places to put this facility. I strongly suggest that you consider those, again, before signing today's lease. There are other options that are less residential and would be just as good and close to railroad. I strongly suggest you reconsider those other options before signing this today and affecting all of the residents that live there.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anything online? Not seeing your hearing, we'll move on with our meeting. Next item on our agenda is meeting minutes for review and approval. Has everybody had time to review the minutes as presented? Have any correction?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes, and we are pleased with four minutes.
Motion to approve? Ashlyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, warrants, expenses, review, and approval. Does everybody have time to review the warrants and expenses? If there are questions, answer them.
I'd make a motion to accept the warrants and expenses as presented by staff.
Motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, proclamations of words of presentation. We had a proclamation that was requested up, up from WDDX, the Department of Domestic Violence Services, and it was for the month of October, to proclaim October twenty-twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we did that to them, and they've already received that, so I just notified the council that it was done and mentioned at the mayor's office. Next on our agenda, business items for discussion and action. First thing on our agenda is business impact. Determination that the agenda items of this meeting on the agenda do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on the business, meaning a trade or occupation conducted for profit, or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
I would like to comment on this. The proposed lease signing actually, in that area affects multiple business owners. There's ranches actually very close in the vicinity, and they make their living selling their meat for human consumption. And you're talking about putting chemical storage and heavy industrial within half a mile of livestock being sold for human consumption. If this doesn't take out a business, I don't know what will. Has the business owners been notified?
Doesn't apply here.
How does it not apply?
Because it's, it's when you impose a fee by ordinance, we're not imposing any fees by ordinance, so it doesn't apply, so you're, you're kind of off base.
Oh, that'll be fine.
Council?
I'd go ahead and make a motion, but there are no items on the agenda that impose a direct or economic burden on staff, on business for staff recommendation.
A motion on the floor? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, administration, grant program proposal. Report on and request to participate in a Brownsville grant program and grant site access to Converse Consultants to perform Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment on property identified as the well eight parcel identification as APN sixteen dash zero three six eight dash two zero, and the former city sewer treatment plant property identification as APN ten dash zero five nine one dash oh three, oh five, oh nine, twelve, and fourteen. And the airport, and airport industrial park property identified as APN thirteen dash zero two four two dash oh one and oh two, and the Sage Heights property identified as APN ten dash zero two one four dash zero three. I believe, Michelle?
Good morning, afternoon.
Michelle Hammond, Director of Nevada ninety-five eighty for the record, and this is my guest Tracy Johnston, he's our consultant with Converse Consultants, who we hired through our Humboldt County Brownsville assessment project. And so we're here today to present kind of an overview. I know many of you are up to speed on what we're doing with the Brownsville program in our community. I took this grant on with my new position, and so over the past year, we've been researching on how we could best utilize it for the community. One of my main goals is how to use this funding strategically to revitalize our community and set us up for funding opportunities to do some other good works on properties that exist throughout the community. So Tracy will go into more detail. Just a reminder, our grant funds are available not only for city and county properties, but also for private properties. So, and this is part of that, that kickoff in our community and, and starting to assess property. So Tracy?
Go to the next slide. So just real quick, brief overview of the Brownfields program. What it is, is basically is to revitalize either properties that are known to be impacted or proceed to be impacted, and essentially allow for those properties to be developed. Many properties are not impacted, there, it could be that there's a suspect potential they might be impacted, they just want to check on it, see, see if the property, what the property looks like, and then make, make a decision going forward on best reuse of that property. But that's the whole intent of the property, as a site, sites are contaminated, or is there a perception that the property is contaminated? And some of the eligible sites you work on are, you know, baking lots, parcels, could be abandoned buildings that might have asbestos or lead-based, lead-based paint, underground storage tanks, could be old gas stations, dry cleaners is another one that you find, you don't find things that give environmental issues with. Those type of, those are the type of properties we're looking at, they're just sitting there that are dormant, and they, we essentially come in there, and this is an assessment grant, it's not a cleanup grant. Basically, go in there, you first, you do some assessment work, if you find an issue that might require some cleanup, you can always, they do have cleanup grants and things of that nature you can go for. And there's no cost shared requirements for the grantee, which in this case is Humboldt County. It's a three-plus-year grant period that you have to basically spend these, these funds. And so there's no obligation really on the county's part to, to put any monies towards me this year. So the first thing you do, you go out there, you, you basically identify properties that are looking to be developed, and it likely could be properties owned by the grantee, in this case Humboldt County, could be properties owned by the city, could be private, private property owners. We do a lot of work, a lot of times realtors are working with folks that be, you know, a due diligence study done on their property so they can move forward with, make a decision on how to, if they can sell that property or if there's some sort of additional work that needs to be done on the property. So you, essentially, what this involves is typically conducting Phase Ones, which we'll talk about next slide, Phase Twos, and then you, you can use that information to develop a cleanup plan if necessary. And they, we also have, they have what's called certified site reuse plans, that you, since you put together, and we'll talk about that here shortly, where you're putting together a packet for, that a developer can use for, provides all the information pertaining that property to see if, you know, to help develop that property, make sure that there's no issues with the property that down the road could develop. So Phase One, a site assessment, is, some of you may be familiar with, it's basically what's called a due diligence. Essentially, most banks require if they're financing a commercial property, they'll require a Phase One to be done to make sure they're not taking on any environmental issues. So they, essentially what you're trying to do is you're going to identify whether there's any potential recognized environmental conditions at that property. And does it, essentially what this consists of, they're just going out and doing a site inspection of the property, reviewing all available records pertaining to the property, interviewing property owners or tenants. There's, there's actually no sampling of any sort that is conducted as part of a Phase One. So one of the, one of the big things why do you do a Phase One is you want to make sure that when you acquire that property, you're not going to be stuck with something that, you know, that you find down the road, and you now own the property, and then you're, you're basically stuck with it. You know, once you buy that property, it's your problem. So what you want to do is just assure that that property is essentially clean and clear for future development. Additionally, if it's a grant-related property, and say that the Humboldt County, the grantee owns that property, if they buy that property without doing a Phase One environmental site assessment after two thousand and two, which obviously we're beyond that, and then down the road, there's an issue where they want to get that property into the grant program for whatever reason, do a Phase One or Phase Two or anything related to that property, they won't be eligible to do that because the Phase One wasn't done when they bought the property, so they...
And just to elaborate a little bit, Tracy, on what you're saying, our understanding from EPA, especially in this funding cycle, they're putting a lot of funding into revitalization, so they've found that communities are more apt to use our grant funding if it's more of a positive thing, instead of, you know, that penalizing people for doing the wrong thing, they're trying to flush money out into doing the right thing. And so part of that requirement is when you transfer, so if the city was considering, you know, getting a, a property transferred to them or purchasing a property, it's really important that the city or the county in those situations have a Phase One completed, because fifty years from now, if you go after EPA funding to help you with something on that property, you won't qualify. And so it's, it's one of those things, especially when we're, we're dealing with bare land, like, for example, with the well property, that we do that ahead of time, because fifty years from now, if we need to access some of that grant funding, we'd be ineligible if we didn't do the Phase One first.
Right. So even, like I said, sometimes you'll find some impacts on the property, but they're not a risk. So one of the things that gives us ability to do is how to manage that, you know, depending on what your use of that property is going to be, or the future use of that property. So managing those risks and understanding, so you don't make this, if there's a situation that you don't make it worse. So that's, that's the other part. And then the Phase Two, Phase Two follows Phase One, and it only, you, basically, if the Phase One identifies some potential recognized environmental conditions or some concerns, maybe suspect tank or whatever it is, or some drains or something, then you go in, and Phase Two involves actually going in there and doing some sampling, and it could be some soil sampling, could be ground, soil and groundwater sampling, could be... And it could be soil sampling, could be ground, soil and groundwater sampling, could be indoor air mold, asbestos, there's any kind of media. You go in there and you can basically assess and determine the fact that there is a problem out there. If you have, you know, and then using that information, you know, if you actually find something, you know, while you're out there, you go out there and you delineate the extent of it, of your problem. It may become reportable to the state, they have reportable levels that you have to then report to the state and get them involved. Doesn't necessarily mean you have to pursue and do a cleanup, but what you really look at on these things is what the risk is. The risk, current risk is, and what the potential future risk is. And, cause a lot of times you can, things can be left in place and they're not, they're not a risk to anybody, not a risk to the groundwater or indoor vapor cruiser, anything like that. So the other thing that this can be useful for is if you have a, say a clean property, you can actually go out there and do some sampling to establish baseline conditions for a property that is going to be used for something else. So you can, you know, go out and sample soils, sample groundwater and demonstrate, okay, this is what we have out here now. And then down the road, it may be something you prepare that to do after use of the property. So that's another useful thing for Phase Two. Certified Site Program is, it's an entry program, I'm pretty heavily involved in this, so what this is, is essentially you're looking at the property and you're looking at various, it's basically put together to help develop property. And you go through all these different things like available utilities, whether there's road transportation nearby, you look at infrastructure that's around the property, you look at environmental issues, are there, you know, environmental issues, are there cultural resource issues, are there, are these in a floodplain, is it in a wetlands? Any of those, these are all things that you put together as a broadband available, electric sewer, water, what potential challenges you might have, zoning, things of that nature. And you put this together, it's a pretty thick report. And that way you have a packet that where if you have someone wants to develop that property, you can give them, you have done a lot of the legwork as far as what permits are required, who to talk to for this or that. And like I said, big thing is availability of utilities, you know, proximal to the site, and what cost would it be to bring those in? Generally, you like to have utilities, things available within about five hundred feet of a property, you know, to do this. But that's, so that's, this is, once you have basically a clear property. And then you've done your phase, you've done your due diligence, you have, generally it's typically vacant properties. And you put together the certified site packet, and like I said, it's something that you go and then get to a planning commissioner or whoever to make that decision, a lot of legwork is done for the developer. So it's easy to develop a property. So, these are the ones we talked about as far as the ones that we're currently looking at, and there's probably going to be many more properties. There's a lot of funds in this grant. So one of the, one of the ones is the City of Winnemucca Sewer Property, essentially the old sewer ponds. So, I've got to go back, you know, basically you can go in there, do a Phase One, Phase Two to basically characterize the, what's there at the ponds, and then develop a plan, plant a plan that's commensurate with the uses, as well as NDP requirements. Cause the NDP has requirements for doing the cleanup up there.
Well, and one of the benefits to working under this grant, leading up to cleanup and reuse is that not only our consultants, but our NDP people are in tune with what we're doing. So they're very, they've been very helpful in the process as far as what documentation we need to have, what we need to have in our site cleanup plans. They've been very, they've worked hand in hand, I guess is what I'm saying with the program across the state, to make sure that we're meeting all their specifications and not wasting time doing things that are unnecessary, or making sure we're including the data and information that they're going to require if we're going to go and approach them for cleanup dollars, for example.
Right. Or if they, or if there's a problem that is reportable. And they have to report it to them, and then just working with them to mitigate the situation where you have a usable, you know, redeveloped property. Key thing though is, is you can, you know, it's just, what you're trying to do is identify, number one, is there an issue out there? Number two is, is that issue something that's a threat to human health or the environment at that time? It could be based on present use or future use. So that's where we work a lot with the NDP on that. The other property is the Sage Heights property, and that's the property up there where all the barracks are. Things of that nature, so there's about, there's a portion of that parcel that we're going to, we're planning on doing the Phase One on. That parcel's going to be, they plan on subdividing that into multiple parcels based on land use. So, when we're working on that Phase One, we're going to, there's certain portions of that parcel that we're not going to mess with, that we're not going to, that aren't really included as part of the reuse.
And so, and just to touch on that one, as you guys know, that that's a co-owned property between the city and the county. And so Dave signed off on the county's part as far as site access go, access goes. I've also met with Alicia on potential reparsaling. We've had some discussion on what that could look like and how we would move forward with that. But as part of this grant, that would be part of that reuse planning for that property. And we can potentially get the parcel surveying done under this grant, is what the hope is. Is that'll help cover some of the costs of what we would like to do there. And then, parcelling it out is really important when you're talking about the reuse, because as you guys know, that's a pretty large parcel, and different parts of that are being used for different things. And so by reparsaling and identifying, you know, what we're doing on each one of those parcels is really important. If, for example, we want to focus a project on like the military buildings, then we want to have that on a parcel that we can then take out to look for potential funding to help us, you know, clean up or revitalize that piece versus looking at the whole big parcel that includes, you know, Humboldt County Public Works, and it includes the proposed site for the buildings and grounds building for Humboldt County. We'd like to cut those out of the pie so that we can focus in when we're looking for funding for certain things. What parcel was that again, I'm sorry? The Sage Heights property? Thank you. Hammond? The EPA is up there, I can show you on the map later, Jane. And then go ahead Tracy?
Yeah, so she brings up a good point. Anything that's related, that can be related to the reuse of a property is potentially eligible to be funded through this grant, whether it be reparsaling, could be an update to a master plan, right? To incorporate, you're going to reuse that property. So there's, the whole intent is that they want to get this, basically get these properties helped to revitalize. They've been sitting dormant for a long time and there's, you know, they're doing, we're using these grants, they're using these grants to try to help get those revitalized. With all aspects, like I said, there's other things that sometimes you can get reimbursed or paid for by the grant. If it's part of the reuse, overall reuse, could be vendorings of the property, potential property use and things of that nature.
Identify utilities.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, any property is a small little parcel, that's just where they're going to be, the city's going to acquire that property, however the acquisition is going to be. But it's, it's basically just was reparced, this particular parcel's just, I wasn't, last time I looked, I didn't even know the GI map yet, but a very small property, just basically to put a minor chain, to put a municipal well out there, probably a wellhouse. And so this was just going to be a simple Phase One. This goes back to, one of the reasons to do it is essentially you're acquiring a property, get the Phase One done. So for whatever reason, if some, something comes out where you want to use grant money or anything to do something on that property, you have done that Phase One, and you're not going to run into problems with eligibility for doing it. Cause it's a pretty simple, like I said, this won't, it's highly unlikely there'll be any Phase Two work done here, it'll just be a Phase One report. And then the last one, there are the properties adjacent to the airport, Phase One. These are bigger parcels and we'll likely anticipate we'll do Phase Two out there, just if anything, just establish baseline conditions of the property, more than that. Probably the soil and groundwater.
So, and that'll be really important with your next agenda item as far as considering the lease. This is the way for the city to be able to cover costs within the Phase One and Phase Two prior to, and to doing the lease agreement. You have some baseline numbers and data to go along.
Michelle? The oh two four two oh one and oh two are already existing parcels. I don't see the parcel that the city is trying to lease.
Say that again?
Okay, in the, on the airport, the adjacent properties to the airport. Oh two four two oh one, thirteen and oh two are existing properties that the, are tied to the airport, the airport property. I don't believe, unless I looked them up wrong or blah blah blah. But if you're, if you're looking at a Phase One for the property that the city is proposing to go out and lease today, I don't think you have it up there.
Is that enough?
It is, it's oh two four two oh one.
Oh one.
There's two parcels, right?
Yes.
Can you clarify something for me? At one point you said NDP has some funding available, or is it, they do?
They do for site cleanup, if you have your Phase One, Phase Two, and there's actual contamination on the site, we can work with them by getting cleanup access.
That would be, I'm sorry, more relevant to like this old sewer.
Yes. So in conjunction with that, once we have some of this work done on these properties, my intention is to ask the county to consider doing an additional grant that builds off of the Brownsville grant that will actually give us site cleanup dollars. And so we can apply from that, to come back on all these properties that we're doing. And that means that throughout this next year, if there's some site cleanup at all, the EPA does have one for site cleanup that we can apply for ourselves without having to go through the state.
Yeah, so that just expand on that, so this is the federal program, the state actually does have a state Brownfields program too. And additionally, they also have the underground storage tank reimbursement program, which I've done a lot of work on. So, say you go out there and you're doing what you're asking, you find an underground storage tank that's potentially, whatever you want to clean that up. You could then potentially go and apply to get funding to clean that up via the less, underground storage tank reimbursement program they have.
So that's like for old tanks that, you know, when they used oil for heating, or it could be, yeah, a gas tank.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes a water.
Yeah.
I have a question. This is the property that Lysia is going to buy or rent, correct?
Lease.
Or lease, right?
One of them is.
So, they lease it and they use it for forty years, and at the end of the forty years, when you get it back, can you do another one of these to see how contaminated their stuff is? And do you have a, I don't know what you call it, but money for the cleanup for that? Are you guys, is it all, and put it into that? So at the end of their stuff, they don't have, I mean, at the end, when everything's null and void, and they bail out? If something was to happen, do you have a large amount of money in the pot for them? So if...
No, so this is just a three-year grant. And so what this does and what I was proposing is if the city would do this, it would create the baseline. So we would know what's there now, it would give us the baseline data. Forty years from now, it would be whoever's in charge's responsibility to come back and retest, but at least they would have those starting numbers on the bare parcel.
But can you not put that in? As a contingency that at the end of the forty years, or when they decide to release the property, that they have a pot? So we're not stuck with the cleanup?
I would think that is responsible for that, for the lease.
Is it in the lease?
Yes.
I had one more, I had another question too. When you're talking about Sage Heights and splitting that property, how far down, how big is that piece of property? Is the whole footprint all the way down to our new animal control center?
Yeah, it goes all the way down to the N dot line, which that could be kind of argued a little bit, placement of that line on the map. Because where the ownership changes, the line kind of crosses the parcel plenty. So, we have some questions on whether that needed to get resurfaced or if that was put in the system correctly. But it's the entire piece. So it includes all of what we refer to as Sage Heights, you know, with the plaza huts, community hall, the local building, everything up above that to the old dog pound, the new proposed site for buildings and grounds, all the way down. The only thing that's parceled out of that is the new animal control shelter. So that won't be included because that's a separate parcel. And then we're not including the public works, the county public works, and what we're doing for assessment because that'll be, the intention is to parcel that out as the public works. So, and again, those things, the parceling will all be brought before you, before any decisions are made on what that looks like.
And you're thinking this Phase One and Phase Two would be, it's a three-year grant, how long would we anticipate before you even come back and say we've finished Phase One and Phase Two? Two years?
Well, Phase Two is dependent on the Phase One, so like, for example, the well eight property will only need a Phase One. So Tracy, go ahead and...
Yeah, the Phase One will take a couple weeks, two, three weeks, you know, typically. And the Phase Twos generally follow those if there's required, and you get those generally done within a month. So, because there's going to be more properties, these are just four that we're talking about right now, but just because the grant just started. So, these are, as you move forward, the Phase Ones are quick. You do, you get someone out here to your site to do your report, generally we do those within two to three weeks from, from the time we're authorized to do them. And then the Phase Twos follow, and they might take another, depending on if you got a drill, you got a good driller out there, what your schedule is. But typically within thirty days, you have those.
You guys have any other questions?
Any other questions?
Michelle, you said that it was best to have this information prior to the lease.
Best to have like the baseline and what is contained in the property? I think it would be part of...
Standard baseline period, doesn't matter if it happens two weeks after.
It would just be important that it happened before any changes.
TV on the property is what's important.
Yeah, exactly what Ken said, just before you have to release.
This is a good program for us to move forward with, so.
I do too. Do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, you do, because what Chris they're asking for is the property owner's consent to access the property that's supposed to...
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve this grant program proposal on our properties as mentioned by staff.
So, before, any questions in that motion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, administration, city property lease proposal. Request to approve the terms and conditions of the proposed lease agreement between the City of Winnemucca and Lithium Nevada Corporation for the city-owned one hundred seventy-seven point three one acre, more or less, property parcel described as lots three, twelve, fifteen, two, nineteen, exclusive twenty-two and twenty-three, section sixteen, township thirty-five north, range thirty-seven east, M D B N M, in the county of Humboldt, state of Nevada, identified as parcel number thirteen dash zero two four two dash zero one, and authorized for, authorization for the mayor to sign the lease agreement on behalf of the city.
And since I was employed by Lithium Nevada when this came to council and as it's gone through, I'll continue to abstain from this today.
Okay. Everybody had the lease early, reviewed it, any questions they had, they directed to the city attorney? Other from the council?
I'd go ahead and make a couple of comments. I appreciate the fact that this, it's taken us ten months, almost a year to get this lease in front of us. And I think there was a lot of people that worked extremely hard to get the information out, to find out what we needed to do. And I'd like to acknowledge Alicia, she's in the front and center of this from the ground up. She was at an airport board meeting or city council or joint meeting, she handled very well, and I appreciate everything she did. It was tough. And to have her here was a big difference for all of us. Ruth and your staff, all the hours you did pulling minutes and agendas for different people. I think that was a huge amount of work that, it may not have been what people wanted to read or see, but it was there and it was available. So I thank you for that. We had a joint meeting with a bunch of different professionals that gave us information on that transloading facility. We've had joint airport board meetings that Wayne's had to deal with, that I appreciate that everything he's done. And Ken, I appreciate everything you've done as legal advisor. In eleven years I've been on this board, not one time has he advised us on something that is illegal or bad for this community. I think this lease is something we talked about from the very beginning to use for our property out there. That's the industrial park, when we started this project, that industrial park was created for a business. And this is the type of business we anticipated, a railroad spur that employed employees that would live in Humboldt County. And those things are all things that we can get out of this lease. things are all things that we can get out of this lease. I think this lease, lease agreement has a lot of protections in place for the city and the residents of Humboldt County. And I am very much in favor of moving forward with this lease at present time.
Any other council comments?
Mayor, I would largely echo Councilman Owens' sentiments. And, you know, just reiterate that it is a hard job on this side of the table, and it is one that we do take seriously. And we are never, not never, but often not able to make it exactly what everybody would want. There are factors to be considered always. And we do consider them. And we do ask questions. And we do, you know, as Mike said, we we are advised by a number of highly qualified people on these matters. And we take that information seriously, as do we take comment from the public seriously. But this entire notebook is comment from the public on this specific matter. So I I agree that it is an appropriate project for the location as well.
I think it's, it's pretty much been said of, again, how I feel about it. They've said it very well. You can believe it, you can not believe it, but we do take it seriously. And we have looked into a lot of your questions. And I believe it's time to move forward.
Mayor, I would just echo everything that's been said. In agreement to those comments, we do take all our public comments very seriously. We've all done our research as well. And I think it's in our best interest moving forward. And I think that the brownfield grant would be a great complement to assessing that property.
I just want to say that this is just the first step. We're just leasing the property. And we'll become Lithium's responsibility to contact the state and get all their permits in place, their access to the property, all that. So all we are doing is just leasing the property.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to...
What about hearing from the public?
This isn't a public hearing.
You're voting on it. It's on the agenda and you're voting on it. I have a question about the lease. I'm sorry, did you just say it's not a public hearing?
You had your comments.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to override the mayor's.
Oh, they just made it so easy.
Oh, good one.
Any further questions? Any council? All in favor?
I just want to put Lithium and the city of Winamaka on notice. In the lease, it does talk about any pending litigation. There are planned lawsuits coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you've all know.
Okay, item number four, administration, American Rescue Plan Funds. Update and proposals for use of American Rescue Act.
No major updates on ARPA funds. The quarterly report for July, September was submitted in October. The one one spends forty-three hundred dollars for the well parcel map. Our total ARPA expenditures at this time are seven million, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, two hundred six dollars and seven three cents. Our remaining ARPA projects include pickleball court, hostile tennis court project, the well eight project, the hotel streetscape, and amphitheater project. And all of those projects are moving forward as planned. And we expect to have all the funds committed by the administration.
Administration, boat Howard Memorial Pool, no aquatic center. Proposals studies and reports for developing a plan for abandoning the existing boat Howard Memorial Pool and options for funding and developing a new aquatic center. We do have some other questions.
Yep. The Aquatic Center survey was distributed on October eleventh. We had a meeting with NIT yesterday to go over the survey results as well as the focus group results. There was over four hundred responses to the survey. There were four separate focus group sessions that targeted different specific pool users. And NIT gave the committee a little, I guess, preview of those results. And NIT plans to come present to city council on November twenty-first.
Thank you. Any further questions? With that, we'll move on to staff and council reports. Alicia?
The well eight project, Lithium Nevada has engaged Shaw Engineering to move forward with the design of the package for the pole selection, wellhouse construction, and connection to the system for well eight. The B L M expansion project, the mayor has signed the B L M expansion lease. The task order for the seat base expansion design has been approved. We are still waiting the fully, waiting for the fully executed, executed lease from B L M. So the design, the project will not move forward until we receive that signed leaseback. The recreation complex projects, working on some preliminary plans for pickleball, pickleball court project. We did meet with L A Studios regarding conceptual design of the amphitheater. And L A Studios is working on a proposal for the design work there. Downtown streetscape, we also met with L A Studios regarding that project. Subsequent to our meeting, L A Studios did not think they would be the best fit for that particular project, but they did have some suggestions for other design firms that maybe. And so I'm, I'm researching that a little bit, trying to find someone who would like to work with us on the downtown streetscape project. No new updates for the community garden. Our heavy aircraft apron reconstruction design, that design progress is moving forward as planned. And then on the general aviation apron, hardstand, that's the one where Q and D, there were some issues with the workmanship with Q and D construction. We did have a meeting with them last week to discuss possible options for remediation, which will be presented to airport board next week and will likely be coming before city council as well.
But they are ready to handle it.
They have, they have submitted a couple options for remediation. So hopefully one of them will be satisfactory.
Me too.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Any questions other?
Yes, I had some things I had thought and comments about. Well, Lexi, I had a late Lexi tabletop, I think last week, Thursday. What was that, Tom? I can't even remember.
It was Friday.
Friday. And it was attended by probably thirty-five, forty people. It was a really good start on how we would handle a seven-point-three earthquake back at Inspiration Point, about fourteen miles south-north-east of Winamaka. And it was a really good start on how we would handle it. And I thought the people there really had a lot of good comments. And Carol ran that program and did a really good job of having us think about what that would look like. And so I I anticipate we'll have probably one or two more working on that same emergency and how we would respond as a city, as a county, as citizens, and what that would look like. So because as everyone said at the meeting, you can't plan during the crisis. It has to have something in place to look at. We had that focus group meeting and Alicia talked about. I I think Tom did a really good job of splitting the people up into four focus groups. I was really happy with NIT's questions and their comments. So I'm looking forward to moving forward on that poll, obviously. The futures program, Michelle, I thought it was great. I thought who you had there and how they handled theirselves and the information they provided was really helpful for all of the people in the audience. And I think it was a right amount of time. So thank you. And I really enjoyed it. Then some questions. Our street painting, are we done with our street painting? Or is there still more painting on streets that has to happen? Do you know?
There is still more to occur. We have a, an agreement with N doc that they will paint the center line striking, which is the majority of what is missing at this time. And their painter is down, their painting equipment is down right now. As soon as that's up and the weather allows, those center lines will be sure.
I was wondering if that's what it was. So it goes back to them. Okay. And then with our insurance account, our self-insurance, I think that's something maybe once a quarter. And I know we talked about it last meeting, but I thought maybe once a quarter we could have an update on what that looks like for us. It doesn't have to be monthly, but. And then the other thing that we used to get, and I think you've got sometimes from our building department, is our year-to-date housing and business, where we stand compared to last year. Please. That, that's it. Teresa?
I have not had meetings to report on. And I'm sorry to say I did miss the futures program, but I heard good things, so.
Vince?
I had a Paradise Nomal Conservation District meeting. And we're partnering with the Paradise Weed District, and they've earned some grants. The one that will start this fall will be the nap weed on Sheldon Lane in Paradise Valley. And again, it's an ongoing fight with noxious weeds. And it's about twenty-two thousand dollars. So they will be starting this fall. There's a, the N V A C D convention in town tomorrow. All of the conservation districts from around the state will be here. And again, there is a, meetings all day tomorrow, and then a dinner at night. Then they have a state board meeting on the following day. So that is coming to town. And we're still working on rock dams and trying to find outside groups that can help us out in some of those areas. And that's all for Paradise Nomal Conservation District. The Humboldt Foundation, Whitworth, Class of Seventy-Three, we, we've worked on finding people that we gave money to. So thankful that they're filling out paperwork and getting it to us so that we can help them with their college education, which they earn through a mentor program or a scholarship program. And it's getting better. And, and again, Michelle, very nice job with the futures. We really appreciate the time and effort that you put into it. And you personally have letting me know exactly what you're doing, what's going on. Thank you very much.
Vince, does a, the student get, can you have that scholarship continuous for four years?
The Whitworth, the Whitworth Foundation or the Class of Seventy-Three is a four-year scholarship. It's two thousand dollars a year. Of course, they've got to meet a couple requirements of getting their grades from the first semester to the second semester to us. They have to only have a two-point-o average. And as soon as they get that, the check is sent to them. And that's the only requirement after they get that and they fill out the original paperwork, is to get that, your classes and grades back to us so that we can continue writing you the check. The other one is a one-time thousand dollars. It's a mentoring program. Seniors work with all the different classes, trying to get kids back up to speed. They're, you know, they're mentoring their peers. It's been working very well, but it's only a one-time.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Ashley?
I did the Main Street meeting last night. It was nice that they're doing a strategic plan. And so that would be great to see that comes to fruition. And they're doing a chili cook-off again this weekend after the Veterans Day parade. So if anyone can go support that. And then I went to the ribbon cuttings for the new Winamaka Collective. That'll be a nice addition to our community that helps people who are crafters and small businesses place their items and not have to be there and to sell them. And then the desert design reimagined, they did a lot of work on their showroom, and that was really nice as well. So they did that ribbon cutting. That's all I have.
Well, Ashley stole my thunder. I was just gonna announce the chili cook-off this weekend. So we're putting a lot of effort into that. And we hope to have a lot of contestants to lead causes. And I've attended the training that she mentioned for the last two days. Miss Michelle was there as well. And how we go about as Main Street coming up with a strategic plan. It's not all, it's what we do. Our group just did a squad analysis, strengths with weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and identified some possible areas we would like to work on and stumbling blocks and roadblocks and how we would overcome that. And this is a partnership between Go Ed and U N R. Our instructor was from U N R, amazing instructor. And so we just simply compile our data. He takes it back and he comes up with a strategic plan for us. And then you could make changes to it as applicable and make it adaptable for our community. So really excited about that. It was a great two-day plan. It was amazing. And yeah, I think the group came up with some amazing ideas. So we are moving ahead pretty good and excited about what the future might hold. And speaking of, awesome futures presentation. Well done. Very informative.
When's the chili cook-off? Friday or Saturday? It said, you said after the parade, isn't parade Friday or Saturday?
It was Saturday. Yeah. So right across street is the one where the street, yeah.
One thing I forgot to mention, I was at the Boys and Girls Club, Early Child Learning Center, ribbon cutting. And again, all of the people involved in making that happen from, I forgot what their list of groups was, but they know who they are. They, a lot of the mining companies and the different people, different foundations, they put together a very nice facility up there. They're about fifty percent right now. They can, I believe they can go up to about eighty kids, zero to five. So it's something we needed and it's moving forward.
Chief, you have anything for us?
Nothing, Lisa.
Okay.
Nevada League of Cities, an update. They do have a director now, Glenn Levitt. He contacted me and wanted to know about Winamaka. I invited him to the futures and he came. And I told him that he can learn more at that than anything I could tell him. So he was rather impressed and picked up, paid a lot of attention to Alicia and her presentation and that and what, what we've been doing, where we're going. We had a discussion about the League of Cities and its direction. And I voiced some of my concerns and the council's concerns. And they've reevaluated the due schedule. And we're no longer slated at twelve thousand dollars. He did send the bill, it goes for seventy-five hundred. Said that would be the max that we would be paid. So, which is less than what we paid last year. So he's new, trying to learn the job, learn the communities. Hopefully we'll be on the right track from now on. So. Christmas Day Parade is, is on Saturday at eleven down Bridge Street. And I did attend a portion of the Main Street thing. And I think it's good that they did the strategic planning and have a roadmap and a goal to work towards rather than kind of floundering like it has been. So that was a good thing. And also Jackie Rosen's representative, we'll get the senior center tomorrow. There's the library today, senior center tomorrow. Anybody that may have some federal issues or anything, you can go talk to them. And other than that, I don't have anything else. And we will open it up for the final public comment. Do we have any public comment this time?
Yes, we do.
I just wanted to ask, quickly, if in signing the lease that you sign representing the airport board and the county in its entirety, or if this is an act for the city specifically, since it's your property?
City-owned property. City, the city will be the best for it.
So you're signing it only on behalf of the city? So you're signing it only on behalf of the city, not in lieu of?
For, for just owner anything.
And/or the county.
County or anything, even the city owns it.
Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Any other public comment?
I just have a couple of questions on the, um, yeah, we can call it, the Trans Living Station, if you guys are signing the documents for that. Y'all said that y'all did your research on this. Have you done any research on the, the chemicals and what they're actually going to do in the quantities and the amount? Has anybody done any research on that? If you did, I'd like to see the documentation of it. I'd like to see all the documentation on all the research that you guys have done on the lithium transloading station. Because I don't foresee you guys having our best interests at heart. I don't live, I, I live a little bit further away. I'm not real worried about it, other than it getting into the water and then contaminating my well. But the wind blows your direction, so I'm not real worried. You guys will be the one that will be worried when this thing hits. But I really, I, I want you, I want you to get me all the records on all the information you guys have looked up on this lithium mine thing, because I don't, I don't trust any one of you guys. I don't think you have our best interests at heart. And I do plan on getting some meetings together with all, with different ones of you guys and some other people in this county. Because I don't, I don't like what you're doing. You haven't, you sit here and you listen, and then you get mad at me. And you just kind of look down, I, you haven't done anything for any of us, none of you. It's because you're in the city and we're in the county, and you just don't get it, that's what it is. You don't care. You don't live out there. If you lived where I live, and if you lived where that lady lived, you would be thinking twice about what you're doing. But none of you guys live out there, so you really don't care. And that's what I get from this board, because every time we've come here, we've gotten sniper marks, just all kinds of stuff going on. And roll your eyes, look at us like we're stupid, tell us to move. I remember at the meeting when we were at the Boys and Girl Club, you looked at us and you told us to move. You don't like it, move. And that's what you said to all of us, move. And yet you sit here and smirk and say these things, and I don't see you guys doing anything for the county people that you're putting this thing in my backyard. My backyard. And this is far from over. This is far from over. Because you have just, you could have put it somewhere else, and you chose not to. I, I'm not quite sure why, because you could have had a transloading station at the other one, but you wanted it here for some ungodly reason, easy access for them, for him and his company. All you want is access to the money. We're not even getting any taxes from this crap. I'm not sure what we're doing here. I, I'm totally disgusted with the board. I am, I'm disgusted with each and every one of you for what you have done. You have not done any good for us at all, because we're county and you're city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
They're not going to get up and talk?
Oh, they'll hear from my attorney.
No public comment? Well, adjourn our meeting.
Did you hear that, Tom? The county doesn't own anything. You guys don't own shit, they don't know.